Well, good evening, everyone, and a very warm welcome to you all at the annual meeting of the Froom Town Council. We are trying a new hybrid arrangement this week for this time, for the first time with some of us here in the chamber and everyone else actually zooming in. So please bear with us if it feels a little bit plenty at times. As we know, this has been a very odd year for us all, and it certainly feels that way for me. This is actually my first and last council meeting in person as the Mayor of Froom. So it's been a very different year as the lockdown there. But I would therefore like to use this opportunity to say a huge thank you to all my councillor colleagues and all the council staff, particularly Laura Flaherty, who has been so good at managing me and my diary. So thank you, Laura. But everyone has been so helpful and supportive to me during this year as Mayor. And of course, I am also indebted to the people of Froom who have been so kind and the many groups and traders that I've met throughout my year have offered so much kindness and support when I've met them. And I'm really grateful for that. I shall certainly miss being there. It's been the most extraordinary experience, which I've loved. It's been very different and absolutely fantastic. So it just remains for me now to offer my sincere good wishes and to say good luck to the new incoming mayor. And with that, I'm going to remove my chain ready for the new mayor and actually draw on someone to propose the new mayor for next year. Sarah, second please. Rob, all in favour? That's unanimous, Paul. And the person is Sarah?
Yes, that's unanimous.
Are you proposing? Right, Andy, over to you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for being such a good mentor to me for last year. Thank you for inviting me along on the journey. I think you're a fantastic mayor in the circumstances of the year. I haven't really prepared any more words, but I will post something online in the coming days. But yeah, thank you very much as well. Your vote of confidence has meant a lot. So am I right now? Excuse me. Okay. So my first task is to find a deputy mayor, someone to help me out. So I need to, I'm going to propose Sarah Butler. So I would need someone to do second. We need Steve Tanner, Anita. So that's unanimous. Congratulations, Sarah.
Oh, thank you so much. That's fabulous. Thank you very much indeed. Does that come from anywhere? Not quite sure where it comes from, but thank you, whoever it's responsible for, because that absolutely deserves it.
Thank you all for joining us tonight, both in person and virtually. We've kept the numbers small to ensure the meeting is as safe as possible. All councillors' staff and public are attending via Zoom. For legal reasons, only the councillors present in person will be able to vote. This is far from ideal, and we hope we can arrange a better system for our next meeting where all councillors get to vote. Otherwise, we'll be running the meeting in the usual way with everyone and anyone chipping in as we go along. You're all very welcome wherever you are. We are live streaming this via YouTube. Becky will be tweeting live updates. Will all participants, town councillors, staff, please mute yourselves until I ask you to speak. Please use the electronic blue or yellow hand to ask a question. There will be a yellow hand at the bottom of your screen found by pressing the reactions button. The councillors present in the chamber, please raise your orange voting card. The votes will be recorded by Paul, our town clerk. Please forgive me if we need to end the discussion and move on if time is short. We have 21 attendees registered today, and you're all very welcome. Please can I ask you to pose questions through the Q and A board? We'll patch you in when it's time for you to speak. Rachel will be managing this and will moderate questions. So the first item on the agenda for tonight is the apologies for absence. We do have apologies from Anita, Annie Barclay, Paul Horton and John Nelson.
Can I give apologies for Sue Hughes, please, also invited this evening?
Sue, Sue, Sue Hughes, apologies.
Yes.
Noted. Okay, we've got a declaration of any councillors' interests. Now, we just need to approve the minutes for the last meeting, which was on the 17th of March 2021. Now? Questions, minutes? Questions on the minutes? Propose, Richard, seconded Anita. In favour? That's unanimous. Andy, you just sign the first page, and we'll sign the rest of them afterwards. Okay, so we're going to go to questions and comments from the public now. And I think we're going to pass over to Andrew Palmer, councillor Andrew Palmer for this one.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Can I just check, can everybody hear me at this point? Fantastic. I'd like to make a statement on behalf of Froom Town Council in relation to the proposed works to Boil Cross. It's also referred to as Market Place Phase Three. This project was first conceived during our Froom Town Council Recovery Group meetings back in late spring of last year. It was then further refined following our COVID recovery panels, where members of the public, Froom traders and retailers were invited to join in various panel meetings. Where members of, sorry, via Zoom, that was, to discuss ways in which the town council, sorry, the town could bounce back following the end of the original lockdown in 2020. The plan was initially brought to four councils for public discussion and vote on the 24th of June 2020. Boil Cross area was great protection, and it should absolutely be the vibrant heart of our community. We make no apologies for the fact that we tried to undertake and complete this project quickly. The goal has always been to have something tangible for the town after COVID and lifting of the original lockdown. However, clearly with multiple lockdown periods after last summer, the plans have been pushed back anyway. Our objective was and remains to develop the area into a space that can be utilised by Froom residents for 365 days a year. And on that basis, we remain committed to delivering the Phase Three project. Representatives of Froom Town Council spoke with traders, retailers and residents. And whilst this was completed informally, the feedback we received was very much more positive than negative. Process wise, can also assure everyone, we've engaged with architects in Nicholas Pearson Associates. We've spoken to other local experts in terms of suitability of materials, i.e. changing the idea of cortex steel to powder coated steel to match the existing metalwork following Phase Two of Market Place. And also with Jane Boldy, who's the amended conservation officer, to meet the requirements of the conservation heritage perspective, to make sure the design is workable. However, we acknowledge that there's been a feeling of an omission talking to some stakeholders. We also take on board other issues raised by local residents who feel that the current plan, that the current plans are not what they would hope to see. So on that basis, we've agreed to pause the project in order to revisit the designs and to meet with various other stakeholders who may feel that they have been left out of the conversation so far. Taking time to hear more voices from the community and the structured process will help us reflect their views. We remain committed, however, to developing the site for the benefit of the whole town. So Phase Three as a project to include seats, planters, will go ahead in some form during this coming year. Councillors have agreed to delegate responsibility, the progression of this project, to the planning and development manager in conjunction with councillor Nick Duff. And we will bring in other Froom Town Council staff and seek other outside agency support as and when necessary. Colleagues and I, and I happen to take in questions on this matter should anyone have them. Thank you.
Rachel, is there anyone who needs to ask a question?
Yes, Kate Billby would like to ask a question in response to.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Smashing. So hi, I'm, as you know, I'm Kate Billby. Councillors may be aware that I asked a question at the last council matters around consultation and this scheme. I'd just like to say I really welcome councillors' decision to pause this project. I think it's a really positive move at this point. I'm really pleased to hear that staff will be closely involved. You have a staff team with an enviable record of leading on consultation and engagement, and that's, so that is great news. I'm delighted to hear, I'm running out of different ways of saying pleased here, but I'm giving it a go, that you'll reconsider the consultative process. So as councillors agreed last year, you, you know, you don't need to start this from scratch. And that wasn't in your original plan. We know that people want seating and planting, that's great. But what you, what you have said and what you can now achieve is a space that works for every day, but will not, again, as you agreed, last June jeopardise existing markets like the weekly traders, Somerset farmers and the Froom Independent. I would just like council to note, because I've heard several times from councillors during these discussions, that the Froom Independent is, you know, only 10 days a year. And that's absolutely true of that physical space, and it would be great to see more traders and events there. But we do have an event in our town that brings over 80,000 people into the town centre a year and at least £3 million into Froom's economy every year. Now, that's an old figure. That's back from town centre panel days. I think it's about five years old. So it, and it doesn't include hospitality or accommodation providers. So I just ask councillors not to lose sight of that when looking at how we, you know, bounce back, as it were. So finally, and positively, I'd just like to say, you as town councillors were elected on a promise of encouraging people to have a say in the way our town is run. You promise, I've got your strategy here, you promise participation and engagement and to bring forward voices that are not usually heard. You say you'll be transparent, open and accessible. I think what you've just done is made a collective decision to stand by that, and that is very welcome indeed. And I really look forward to seeing the results. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any more?
No more questions regarding that. John Clark, you're up.
Do you hear me, John?
He's just rejoining the webinar.
Oh, good evening. And firstly, can I just say I'm talking to my capacity as Chair of the Broadway Allotment and Community Gardens Association. But in my other capacity as a local councillor, can I conductate Andy for being elected mayor and Sarah for being elected deputy mayor? So I wanted to use this opportunity, following a press release issued today by Mendick District Council as to the Broadway site. Just to recap, firstly, we welcomed the support last year of Froom Town Council, who pledged if, in the event that the land is transferred to the community, that they would continue discussions that we had previously started with you as to transferring the ownership of the land. So we welcome that support and hope that support will continue. And I know since that time, it has been now been adopted as a possible development site for social housing. However, the Broadway Association and the community who have launched and continued their campaign over the past year and a half, we have presented a very strong case that in this instance, in terms of this land, it should remain for the use of the whole community. And, and our website will give further details as to why we think that in terms of protection of open spaces and green spaces in our town, which have ecological value, as well as green space value, which we know during the pandemic has been a valued asset. The countryside and nature has been a valued asset to our communities. So I just wanted to respond to the Mendick District Council press release, which we think was in response to our open letter to Roz White, who is the leader of Mendick District Council, in which we asked them to cease consideration of the site for housing, social housing, to halt such considerations. The press statement, and let me just get it up for you, sorry. The press statement says that Broadway is not being considered for development in the council's current, and that's my emphasis, social housing programme of works. So whilst we welcome this statement in terms of clarification, it doesn't, we feel, at the association that is, we feel is any further on in reaching the decision that we believe should be made and must be made for the benefit of the whole community of Froom. And that is that the land be transferred to the ownership of Froom Town Council. So I just wanted to put that on the record, i.e. we do not think this statement is adequate. The only adequate and statement we would want to see is a decision to halt the consideration of the site and a decision to continue the discussions with the association and Froom Town Council as to the ownership of the site. Thank you very much.
John, pass over to Mark Dorington now.
John, I have a question for you.
If you do it through Zoom, Mark.
Yeah. Congratulations on what you've achieved so far. I came to see the ordinance when I was mayor and I've been there since. It's great what you've done for the place. I really appreciate what you've done there. What we said tonight, and with one of your many other acts, I'm your director. We've been bringing the same level of scrutiny and defence to the other green spaces throughout the town, which could possibly be built on.
I'm, I'm speaking as the Chair of Broadway Allotment and Community Gardens. I can't comment on any other proposals that may be in the pipeline around other green spaces. Sorry, I'm not prepared to comment on that. I understand there is a proposal and it will be made public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other? Yes.
Yes, Peter McFadden would just like to know that he agrees with Kate Billby's statement, he says she makes a lot of sense.
Peter McFadden is agreeing with Kate. Anything else? I'm going to propose that we make an amendment to the agenda right now and move, move something forward. Approving the revised Froom Town Council strategy from 2019 to 2023 with Rob, and who bumps that up to the agenda. So Rob, it's the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So this is brought to council as a way to review our strategy, which was written in a very collaborative way two years ago, just under two years ago. And in bringing it back, we're just following through some of that we said we do on a regular basis to review it regularly. In many ways, it's much the same document as it was before, but hopefully it's much improved. Again, there's been a lot of input from variety of different people, in particular Sarah, myself, Rachel and a number of others who've had the opportunity to contribute to it. I like to think that it broadly speaking falls into two halves. The first half is actually strategic in as much as it describes what we want to try and achieve and why we want to try and achieve it. And that's in the first six pages. The remaining 12 pages are really more a discussion of what, what it is that we, how we go, how we hope to go about achieving the strategy. Couple of things that have been highlighted in the agenda item paper, which I think is true to, there's been a particular stress on promoting community participation, which we've already had some welcome appreciation for this evening. And the second bit is just bumping up a little bit in terms of the rhetoric at least. Our intention to try and move Froom towards being a much more resilient town in relation to climatic and ecological issues. It's a long document. There's a great deal in there, and I'm not going to try and condense that in any further. So I recommend it to my fellow councillors.
Thank you, Rob. Do we have any questions from anyone regarding that? No. We have a proposer for this. Richard, seconded. Andy, all in favour? That's unanimous. Andy, you said you told that Jane Warden just needs to read out a statement, someone about someone, um, which is. We set out a sort of question and answer to Jane, do you able to take that now?
Yeah, I can do. Yes, thank you. So we have received a question in advance of the meeting. The question being, is the council raising objections to Mendick District Council about planning consents for FR2 and FR3? Those are the two allocated, sorry, the three allocated sites at Little Kefird that councillors will be familiar with. And the 157 acres for Selwood Garden Community, as we believe it is environmentally destructive, unsustainable and swallowing up greenfields for profit without benefits for the town or decent affordable housing. So in response to that, we have responded to the applications for the little, three Little Kefird sites. And we've also responded to the pre-application consultation on Selwood Garden Community. Both of the responses are really quite long, so I'll, I'll just give you some highlights of the responses in both cases that I've put together. So for the three allocated sites at Little Kefird, we have formally objected to those applications on the grounds that we, we don't feel that the proposed master plan is adequate. There are no overarching strategies for access and transport, no holistic plan for habitat drainage or landscaping, and no overall standards for the design, materials or a sustainable build. There needs to be consistency in all the surveys and assessments so that the overall impacts can be properly assessed. We have asked that the option of a roundabout is further explored and that there needs to be better vehicular connectivity, with serious concerns about the sustainability measures proposed for all three sites. So, so that's just a bullet point of, of the headlines for, for the objection to those applications. You can read our objection in full on Mendick's website, or if anybody wants to contact me, I can email it to them directly. The Selwood Garden Community, as I said, this, we sent a formal response to the pre-application consultation. And again, I'll just go through the headlines. What we have said is that Froom Town Council is not fundamentally opposed to a town extension that creates an opportunity to provide planned development with much needed facilities and infrastructure for the town. But before we are able to support or object to this, we have to be able to justify our support or objection in terms of the benefits such a development will bring to our community or identify that these benefits are not sufficient. We also need to be able to fully evaluate all the issues that were raised as part of the engagement feedback. A lot of this information will not be available until the outline application is submitted to Mendick, at which point detailed ecology surveys, traffic impact assessments and modelling, details of design codes, plus much more information will be available to scrutinise. The figure of 1,700 houses is too high, and we would want to see a reduced number of houses. The approach to transport needs to be far more radical and must be around making walking, cycling and public transport priority. There should be an adequate employment provision. And we are concerned that the town's infrastructure is not capable of coping with such a development. And lastly, it's essential that all buildings are built to the highest environmental standards. As I say, the full response is quite long, and that response can be viewed on our website. Or again, if anybody wants me to email them a copy directly, then please contact me and I'll do that.
Thank you, Jane. Does anyone have any comments or questions? So we're heading to agenda item four now, was it five? It was five. Signing motion to support the Climate Change and Ecological Emergency Bill, that is going to be presented by Rob Colly.
Thank you. Yes, so Froom Town Council declared a climate emergency in December 2018 and pledged at the same time to make Froom carbon neutral by 2030, that's in eight years' time. It also resolved to call on Westminster to provide the powers and resources to make the 2030 target possible. Because it's absolutely clear that the necessary action that will enable us here in Froom to become fully carbon neutral by 2030 can only be achieved by substantially being resourced through national government initiatives. For example, one of the most substantial means of reducing household carbon footprints is through switching to renewable energy sources and reducing the amount of domestic energy needed, principally through better insulated homes. The great advantage of this initiative is that there are not only impacts on those suffering from fuel poverty and ensuing health problems that come from that. It creates jobs and reduces the percentage of domestic income spent on fuels. In other words, it's a win-win situation for everyone. spent on fuels. In other words, it's a win-win situation for everyone. Boris Johnson admitted as much in his November 2020 10-point Plan for Green Industrial Revolution, flagging up an increased funding for an already existing green homes grant. Unfortunately, three months later, that grant was entirely removed in the most recent budget. So seemingly the government's priorities are shifting. So the question I want to ask is, when does an emergency become an emergency? And at what point can we merely stop talking about an emergency and act to address it with sufficient urgency? The whole point of the Climate and Ecological Emergency Bill tabled by Caroline Lucas and written by a team of climate scientists is to pass into the law the necessity of acting urgently to address the situation before it becomes too late. So this bill has already been tabled by Caroline Lucas in September 2020 and is now currently supported by 108 MPs across all eight political parties. As well as 16 towns sitting in parish councils and 15 district county councils. And there are 106 organisations signed up to supporting this from right across the English spectrum of organisations. At this point, I'd like to ask Laura just to play a very short video. It's a couple of minutes by one of the writers or contributors to the Climate and Ecological Emergency Bill, a conservationist called Dr Charlie Gardner from the University of Kent.
Emergency. And the CEE bill is really important to help us deal with it. Do you know about it? I'm one of the scientists to help write the bill and this is what it's about. Part one is about reducing our emissions to keep planetary heating down to 1.5 degrees. This will minimise extreme storms, wildfires, floods and all the rest of it. Part two is about conserving and restoring ecosystems and soils, protecting wildlife in the places we love and absorbing lots and lots of carbon into woodlands and vegetation. Both make it clear that if products we import cause emissions in China or deforestation in the Amazon, we'll treat that as our problem and not someone else's. Part three is about how we make the decisions we need. The bill calls for a citizens' assembly to help government and parliament create the strategy to make it happen. People backed bold decisions, avoiding party political infighting, where people have a real say in choosing a fair path to a zero-carbon society and a thriving natural world. Get your MP to support the bill. Our future is dependent.
So I'd just like to conclude by saying that the Climate Change Act, which was in 2008, which was a world-leading initiative adopted by this country, was also a private members' bill. And it took three years for it to become law, which demonstrated that even at that time, you needed a substantial amount of pressure from other groups other than just MPs to persuade the government that it was a necessary move. This particular bill will, if it ever does see the light of day, will actually make sure that the promises which are being made through, you know, in a vast variety of ways, will actually see the light of day. So I'd just like to ask us as a council to support the alliance of different political parties and organisations seeking to persuade and lobby the government into adopting the measures in the bill.
Thank you, Rob. I think we've got John Clark who wants to make it. Do you have a comment? Is that right? Yeah. So hand over to you, John.
Oh, thank you very much. I wanted also to comment on the statement that's just been made about Selwood Garden Communities. Can I do that first? I didn't have enough opportunity beforehand to get my question in. Was that a yes?
You should be fine with that one.
I can't hear, sorry. I'm assuming that's a yes. I'll keep it brief. Can I just say, I welcome, as a county councillor and district councillor, I welcome the statement made tonight by Throem Through Town Council as to Selwood Garden Community and the proposed development. I would echo the comments made by Jane Llewellyn that whilst we need housing in the town, we also need housing in the right place and we need the right infrastructure to accompany that housing. I'm concerned that this is over, overdevelopment from what we've seen so far and that the infrastructure will not cope for the town of this size. And infrastructure, by infrastructure, I mean the highways, the roads, the roads and the education. There are no no plans for any increased education facilities. There's no plans for any health facilities as far as I'm aware in the, in the proposals that have been issued so far. So I think any development needs to be strongly scrutinised in terms of how it will benefit the town and that the adverse effects will not be greater than the benefits, which I think is a statement that Through Town Council has made. Regarding the Climate and Ecological Bill, can I just say, I would really welcome the support of Through Town Council in this and in supporting this bill. I think, as Rob has adequately said, and the video shows, we are in an emergency. We are in a crisis. We haven't got time. And this bill will put pressure on the government to take real action to tackle the climate emergency and actually take real action to deal with this climate crisis, which we are experiencing across the world already in terms of refugees from other countries because of climate change. So this would call on the government to take real action and to abandon projects like HS2, which not only are extraordinary amounts of money, but actually do not benefit the wider community and do not fit with climate change and the need to address climate change in terms of how we move around our country. Thank you very much. I tried to keep it brief, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, John. I can see that Lizzy Boyle, councillor Lizzy Boyle, has a digital hand up, so I'm going to pass over to you, Lizzy.
Thank you. Brand new mayor. Just reiterate how delighted I am to see you wearing the bling. Similar, similar to John actually, but far less eloquent from me. I found it really significant and interesting that this, the discussion about the Climate and Ecological Emergency Bill followed on from the discussion that we'd had moments ago about Selwood Garden Community and the Broadway allotments. And it really helps to bring into sharp focus that we as a council and those of us on the planning committee have a lot of different factors that we grapple with every time we consider a new project, a new planning application, a new idea for a development. And that, you know, we have to, as Jane said, look at the the benefits of things, look at the the costs of things. And sometimes those costs aren't financial. Sometimes those costs are, you know, social or ecological and so on and so forth. So anyway, that's a reflection. There's no question. Just to say, I support Rob's endeavour and I think that it would be great for us to support this bill and really bring more thinking about ecology and ecological emergency into our thinking about climate emergency in the work that we do as well. That's it.
Thank you, Lizzy.
Adam McFadden would like to urge the council to support the proposal presented by Rob Collet on the CEE bill. And we also have Chief Gardener who'd like to ask a question.
Drew?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I greatly support and I really applaud councillor Collett's motion. I think anything that we could, that we can do in this town and in the district across Mendip, anything that we can do to to support actions which have a more thoughtful view of climate change. And, you know, this, but I think we can point all of this back to central government. We can do that quite easily. But I think we all need to think of how, how we can influence things in our own community as well. And it's just little things. When I moved to Throem five years ago, there was an electric car that you could hire and now it's a petrol one. And, you know, it'd be really great if we could look at ourselves in the mirror, whether we're ordinary Throem citizens, whether we're Throem Town Council or the Mendip District Councils, and whether we can work out how we can expand what we're doing, not asking just central government, but also asking ourselves. So, you know, whether we can expand the electric charging facilities that you guys offer and whether we can get electric vehicles back to where it was five years ago. So yeah, let's, let's hold central government's feet to the fire as much as we can. But let's do our bit too. And let's see what we can do just to turn the clock back maybe five years and get a better offering for, for the local people. This is something we're in control of. We can actually do this. We don't have to go cap in hand and banging on the door of 10 Downing Street to do this. We can influence change ourselves. And I just want to invite Through Town Council and Mendip District Council to do more on these fronts. Yes, sure, ask central government, but let's do more ourselves to try and influence things positively. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. No more? I've one more. We've had an email in from Chris Meldin, who is going to join us on this fully sporting proposal to the CEE. I have a proposer, Sarah. Rob, Sackendorf. Then all in favour? That's unanimous. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is ratification of the decision to take out a loan for the decarbonisation measures at the town hall. And is that what you thought? That is actually Nikki Bray. Nikki Bray, that is what you.
Hi, thank you. Yes, so I guess quite a neat segue into what we're doing to reduce our own carbon emissions. So back in January this year, we submitted that application to the Public Sector Decarbonisation Fund for grant funding to cover the cost of solar PV and LED lighting at town hall. Unfortunately, the grant wasn't successful because it was really oversubscribed by about a billion pounds. So the, the second option that we went for was a zero-interest loan that's also provided by Salix. So we'd waited till the, till the budget was announced to see if there was a second round of the grant funding, which was, unfortunately, the project wouldn't be eligible because the second round focused only on heating. So we decided to take out a loan. However, on the 30th of March, the Salix team got in touch to say that the scheme will be closing at year end, so the day after. So we had to submit the application fairly fast. So Peter had to send around an email to councillors to approve the loan at short notice. So the proposal here is to ratify that decision to take out a zero-interest loan for £22,845, which will be repaid in six monthly instalments over five years. And probably something else to mention, which wasn't in the paper, was that even though it's an upfront investment, both measures will lead to significant financial savings over the lifetime of the solar panels, as well as obviously the carbon reduction associated with it.
Thank you, Nikki. Do we have any questions or comments? I can see Lizzy Boyle with her hand up again.
Yeah, again. Just again, so this is happy to ratify from a personal perspective. Huge thanks, huge thanks to Nikki, to Sarah Williams and to Peter Wheelhouse for their work on this because this landed on them at very short notice just before Christmas. It landed back with them again at very short notice, just after Christmas and the New Year. And it landed back with them again at the end of March in incredibly short notice. And they were so flexible, so adaptable, so good at getting all the information together. And it's had potentially a great outcome in terms of what we can do for the town hall with somebody else's money. So just huge thanks and appreciation from me.
Thank you, Lizzy. I'm going to head over to Rob now.
Yes, I'd just like to second that as well. And then also just say that I think this is an incredibly important initiative in as much as we have to be seen to be walking the talk ourselves. And, you know, obviously we've got a rather old building here, which has all sorts of challenges in relation to turning into definitely a carbon-neutral institution. But we really need to get on with it. And I think this is great. You know, we are definitely doing that. So thanks very much.
Rob, anyone else? I have a proposer, please. Anita Poyet, Sackendorf, Steve Panner. All in favour? That's unanimous. So the next agenda item is a review of the work programme for 2020 and 2021. That is with, so, so, yeah. And so I'm going to backtrack when you go to Anne Hills now.
No, don't worry. I was just indicating from the sidelines my support. I know I can't vote, but I'm raising my hand. That's all my hand was for. Thank you.
Gestimation, I see. All right, okay. So we're going to head back to the esteemed Peter Wheelhouse.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Laura, I wonder if you could bring up the slides, please, for this item? Thanks, Laura. Well, it's, it's proved to be a challenging year. I'm sure you will appreciate that. But one where the council, working with its partners in the community, has not only responded to the pandemic, but also completed a very full work programme. So much of the red, amber, green rating appended to the report is marked green. We do accept, however, that there are some red items that we haven't delivered. In many cases, this was either down to COVID restrictions or the redirection of staff resources to address the impact of the pandemic. You will be pleased to hear, though, that we will be redoubling our efforts in the current year to finish what we have started. Now, our work to deliver the work programme has been a whole team effort, but we would not have achieved as much as we did without the dedication of our staff in teams that helped oil the wheels of the machine. I would include in this staff, sorry, I would include in this staff involved with business and finance, administration, marketing and communications, and the ranger team, who have all provided the support and systems to enable us to continue to function through the pandemic. It's difficult to do justice to the work programme in a few minutes, but I hope you will find the following highlights inspiring nonetheless. Next slide, please. So the year began with an enormous effort in response to COVID. Many of the staff were redirected to answer phone queries and were out in the community, delivering Frua Eats parcels, setting up volunteers for the Shop For Me service and delivering support campaigns. Throughout the pandemic, we've ensured that our website has been kept up to date with the latest information or support available to the community. We've also issued regular business bulletins to keep businesses abreast of government grant support and local initiatives. The vocational training group has brought together training providers and other agencies to address the growing need for training and retraining. Spring Forward is now a dedicated web-based resource for those seeking opportunities. Next slide, please. And the town hall this year turned its hand to being a testing station and hosted weddings for the first time in 42 years. Here are some of the images of those happy events. Next slide, please. Whilst some physical events couldn't proceed, there were virtual events galore. The images here show just a handful of examples. Some were designed to celebrate the town's creativity and enterprising spirit. Others were about promoting community support services, active travel. Others were about promoting community support services, active travel, and encouraging people to shop local. Examples include Fivafest, Let's Get Christmas Wrapped Up, and the Virtual Christmas Market. We also hosted online training for residents, practitioners, community organisations and businesses over Zoom, with sessions on the importance of play, young people's mental health, setting up and running a street party, and various business topics in partnership with the chamber. Next slide, please. On community development, street level groups and neighbourhood organisations have grown in number, remarkably from twenty one to sixty seven over the last year. Next slide, please. And we've supported the neighbourhood network, where representatives of street neighbourhood groups come together to share ideas, ambitions, and make things happen in their areas. Next slide, please. We've enabled share boxes, notice boards, and growing projects to become established. And another example of our response to local needs at neighbourhood level is our work on a play strategy with the help of children's scrap store. We work with county to enable playing out in the street and with Mendip to make road closures for street parties much easier. Next slide, please. It's been a busy year for Jane and the planning committee, with over three hundred planning applications responded to. Amongst these, as you're probably aware, were some major development proposals, including Saxon Vale, Selwood Garden Community, uh pre-application, and schemes for Little Kefird. Throughout, our role has been to enable the community to have their say and represent their views. In regeneration, we substantially completed improvements to the marketplace, and we commissioned work on a ventilation system at the Cheese and Grain to support its reopening. Next slide, please. Twenty 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 one has seen a growth in our work on resilience, aided by three successful bids for external funding. One will enable the co-design of a school street with the local community in the current year. The second will enable the development of a local cycling and walking infrastructure plan and the appointment of resilience engagement officer. And the third is currently levering in three hundred thousand pounds of national lottery funding to address both our carbon footprint and improve health in the community. Next slide, please. Some of the ways in which our environment team have made a difference over the year include new share boxes in our parks and green spaces. Pack saddle play area now has a new bull court and a new hedgerow of native street, native trees. Government funding has been secured for a tiny forest at Egford Lane. There are new ranger-made benches in our parks and open spaces and one on Catherine Hill. And we've started putting in way marker posts so people know the names of the places that we look after. And most importantly, residents have told us that they are increasingly discovering and valuing the green spaces that we manage. So that's the end of the presentation, and obviously I'm very happy to take questions.
Oh, that's a question.
Peter, thank you for that very uh pleasant review of the evening. Hang on, I have something we talked about before. What people ask me for with regards to how work's like is when your balloons in Victoria Park be by the refurbishment of place. I see it's it's an amber, COVID-hambered plan. So does that mean that we can now start making plans to to go ahead now? We're coming out of this um obvious situation we found ourselves in.
Mike, I wonder if Paul would be able to answer that question.
Yeah, sure. It's a good question. It's a um a main of our lives trying to get this project off the ground. Chris has really struggled to get contractors to quote, to do the work for us um and then make sure that we can afford it afterwards. He's he's trying his best and give it a bit more capacity and some time to be able to progress this. It would be really good, but I I I share, and I think Chris shares as well, this point of we have progress as fast as we can. But it's on the on the top of the list. Thank you.
Rich?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, on behalf of all the councillors, thank you to all the staff and rangers particularly, that we've made all this possible because, hey, it was really difficult to anything over the last fourteen months, so well done. And even this meeting is a minor miracle, given the stupidity of the government's current law, uh that half of us have to be here electronically and that a few of us are allowed to be here personally. Mark, have you done anything at all this year? Yes. Steve, ah, Maxine, darling.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's lovely to see you all in the council chamber and big congratulations to you, Andy, on becoming our new mayor. Um, it was amazing to see that presentation from Peter. The way that our staff came together in ever-changing, almost sometimes day by day circumstances and looked after the community and supported us as councillors as well to do our bit looking after the community has been absolutely phenomenal. And it's not been a sprint. It's been a an absolute marathon, and we're not out of it yet. And I just wanted to just join in in congratulating absolutely everybody and say we do feel part of it sitting out here in our homes on on Zoom. So thank you very much for organising tonight as well. Let's see what the future brings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maxine. Uh, anyone else, anything else to say? We're good. Just moving on the way. So we are, um we're going to decide whether to support a petition in support of the campaign to legalise virtual council meetings now. Um, that's good for you. Are we being naughty?
Uh, we're not being naughty. Um, as as Luke said earlier, uh, we we find ourselves in a very unfortunate position alongside every other tax in the country in that uh the government brought in temporary legislation to allow virtual meetings. Um, and the important bit for councillors to I've just put a message in front of my screen. Can everyone hear me online? Yeah, good. And uh government brought in temporary legislation to allow decisions to be made virtually at council meetings. Um, the temporary legislation ran out and they decided not to renew it. Um, there's been an unsuccessful High Court challenge uh to to try and get to turn that around. Um, but we are in in the vote of every other councillor in the country trying to sort of just find a way of of meeting publicly safely um and taking votes as best we can at the moment. So, uh, and I think it's it's not the place for it to be. And I I hope that this will be the only meeting we have to do this silly arrangement. Um, so the proposal is to 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 both, one, one to support the brilliant campaign that up past the town council have um started to 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 persuade the minister to to do something about this. And secondly, uh, to respond in the same way to the government consultation um to to make it make virtual meetings a legal way of council decision-making. So two, two methods to do the same end. And the recommendation is to 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 do that.
Any questions? Proposer? Steve Tanner, second there, Anita Collier. Anybody in favour? Does she notice? Okay, we're deciding whether to adopt the council standing orders and councillors' code conduct and whether to adopt the power of general competence. And that is with
You're getting four. Yeah, yeah. Um, thanks, Andy. At this meeting every year, uh councillors have a another meeting standing orders. It tweaks as necessary. Um, so the first recommendation is is around re-adopting standing orders. Um, there's uh especially with councillors, uh we'd like to 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 sort of take out this section referring to the specific group or the advisory group. Um, and other than that, standing orders remain unchanged. So the proposal is to to approve those. Andy, perhaps if I do all three of these, you know, if you want to take them all together? Um, secondly, again, the councillors' code conduct uh comes to this meeting to 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 swear allegiance to the code for councillors. Um, and this one is is the current programme I've talked about here. I just want you to know that the next council meeting, uh I'll be bringing uh a new code of conduct that's been produced by the London Government Association and the National Association of Local Councillors. And uh in the in the attempt to try and um have some consistency over this code throughout councils in the country, in their county units of parish or district. So, uh, what I'm asking is to to support the existing one, but I will bring back to 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 the council next time the new one. And we'll have a bit more of a discussion around that. So the second recommendation is is to to uh uh re-adopt the code of conduct. It's um it's an appendix call. And then finally, um, this 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 crucial power we found in the last three years uh that came in with the voters of Act of Two Thousand and Eleven about the the general power of competence. Um, again, I always bring this to to this council to 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 re-adopt and to reconfirm that that councillors and the council uh wants to do this. And without it, we would be able to do very little uh because it changes the the way the uh the 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 legal permissions that the council set from a list of things that you can do to a general power of competence, which means that you can do anything you like so long as it's not illegal, which obviously opens up the options for this council, which exposed and exploited to us. Not to exploit, but but a lot. And so the third uh recommendation is to just uh confirm the eligibility criteria that this council still uh is eligible to um to uh use the general power of competence. And that is that you're elected, which you were, and that the clerk is qualified, which I am. So Andy might want to take those three recommendations in total.
Is there any questions? Proposer for that, Andy Palmer, second there, Mark Danton, anybody in favour? That's unanimous. So next, we are appointing leader and deputy leader of the council and memberships, chairs and deputy chairs of committees and advisory groups. I'm going to hand this over to Scott Ward.
Yeah, so. Sorry, I was having a few issues in my headset just as you were like handing over to me. So of course that happened. Okay, so. There with me. One second. Right here somewhere, it says. Can you hear me? So we have various roles um that we have to decide on this evening. Um, who is doing what and also who is sitting on which committees? Now, I have passed across a list already to Laura um of which councillors will be sitting on which committees. Uh, do you happen to have that to hand, by any chance, Laura?
Or are you going to share that or or do we not create that?
We didn't, we didn't put it on um the slide, but only the recommendations, but I can read them out if it's helpful.
Yeah, so I'm still just trying to find on my computer my uh.
They want me to read them out.
If you could, while I gather myself, it would be great. Thank you.
So you're starting with the chairs, uh the the leader and the
Yes, please.
Um, so uh the proposal is to make Andy Palmer and Maxine Crawley co-leaders. Um, and the deputy leader, apologies, um will be Anita Collier. And do you want to move on to the committees?
Do we do we have to vote on each one of these or can we do them as a
We can take all of these together.
So then for council matters, it would be Andy Palmer, Andy Rintmore, Anita Collier, Anne Hills, John Nelson, Lizzie Boyle, Mark Dorrington, Maxine Crawley, Nick Dove, Rich Ackroyd, Rob Collett, Sarah Butler and Sheila Gore. And for town matters, it would be Ally Barclay, Andy Palmer, Andy Rintmore, Anita Collier, Anne Hills, John Nelson, Mark Dorrington, Maxine Crawley, Nick Dove, Paul Horton, Rich Ackroyd, Rob Collett, Sarah Butler, Scott Ward and Steve Tanner. And for planning, it will be John Nelson, Lizzie Boyle, Mark Dorrington, Maxine Crawley, Paul Horton, Rich Ackroyd, Sheila Gore, Steve Tanner. And for the grants advisory panel would be Ally Barclay, Andy Palmer, Anne Hills, John Nelson, Mark Dorrington, Rich Ackroyd, Scott Ward, Sheila Gore and Steve Tanner. And then it would be worth noting that the mayor, leader, deputy leader and the chairs of the three committees will sit on both council matters and town matters. Um, and then for the uh chairs and deputy chairs of the committees, so uh it's proposed to make Lizzie Boyle the chair of council matters um and Mark Dorrington the deputy of council matters. Uh, Nick Dove as the chair of town matters and John Nelson as the deputy chair of town matters. Steve Tanner as the chair of the planning committee and Paul Horton as the deputy chair of planning. And then Anne Hills as the chair of the grants advisory panel and John Nelson as the deputy chair of the grants advisory panel. Think I'm done.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, so I apparently have to propose that we take all of these in one go just to make sure everyone's full of that. Yeah, that's all right. Yeah. Um, so uh we have a, we just did propose, right, propose a second there. One, thank you. Yes, seconded by Robert Thorpe. That's that's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, so the next uh agenda item is approving the annual governance and accountability return for twenty 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 one and the reserves earmarked for specific projects. This is with Sarah.
Hello there. Uh, the financial reports have been circulated. Laura, go to the slide, please. As as already reported, COVID nineteen did um result in income losses and other costs. Uh, these are covered by our service and our grant fund and the district council. Um, there were um budget underspends and overspends, um but the resulting uh service has been put into new green officers or additionally earmarked for projects to be carried forward this year. All staff successfully worked from home and were more confident in the first week of lockdown. And that has continued throughout the year. We finished the IT upgrade, which was a costly project over two years and part of this needed to be built. meeting will, sorry, Sheila, that is, part of this meeting will approve within the beginning of the year. Next slide, please, Laura. So big thanks to Hannah again this year for her fantastic book evening, Hannah for the first year drafting this annual return, which we reviewed and was approved by the internal auditors. So the internal auditors provided their report in appendix seven and the annual governance statement says that the council accepts responsibility for and confirms that there is a sound system of internal control, including the preparation of council statements. So the first recommendation is that the chair and the clerk sign on council's part that they agree all the government's statements in section one of the annual governance statement that we thought we thought it was.
Sarah, just bringing round the importance of Andy learning to sign. Sarah, with my side.
Sorry, one last, second one. So the chair of the board.
Sir. Great.
That would be sign of the second. So I think we lost a slide. Never mind. The second part is for the chair and the RFO to sign on council's part and approve the council statements. So I've already signed that and the councillors agree that you'll force the chair to sign that next document.
Yeah, actually we need to place a second of this and the previous one, I just remember. Seconded, Rich Ackroyd, seconded by Anita Collier. Does she notice? So those are the first two recommendations you have. Sorry. Then to you, Sarah.
So that's both documents through the vote.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item to approve is the notice period, yes, exercise of public rights. We will be placing one notice form on our website, the council statements for the public to do, which I don't expect in detail by contacting. So we have approval of the exercise of public rights date for twenty twenty one.
So could you say which one of those it is?
That's recommendation four.
Okay. First, Andy Palmer, seconded by Rob Collett. Does she notice?
So also certainly the finance reports were proposed to be not observed for the start of the year and there are some to approve today. Recommendation six, to approve the revise of the not observed for the start of the financial year.
Seconded, Anita Collier, seconded by Rich Ackroyd. Does she notice? Seven, you want to do recommendation five?
Yes, part of the internal auditor's report we alerted at, in January twenty one, although councillors approved the work programme and preset request, we omitted the work budget from the recommendation. So we're repeating here the, we're putting here the recommendation to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two budget presented for the January council meeting where the work programme and preset were approved.
Seconded, Andy Palmer, seconded by Rob Collett. You want to say that? Does she notice?
And finally, we completely proved the amount in general, so that stands at two hundred and twenty one thousand a year, which is slightly less than the same time last year, but as was requested by Mendip, we have used our reserves to support the Covid work.
So Sarah, the recommendation is to note that, so you don't need to vote on that. You've noted it, it's patented, the record. Finally, Sarah, just, we don't need to vote on that.
No, I just didn't ask. Anita. Thank you. Sarah, just a quick question for you for clarification to my sake. You talked about having two hundred and twenty thousand a year of reserves?
Yes.
I've got a figure of a hundred and eighty thousand in my head. Is this the figure we're talking about that's now increased?
Yes, the council. Our financial regulations state that we should have a minimum of a hundred and eighty thousand. That figure was set some years ago, that Andy and I have already had a discussion with councillors about potentially increasing the minimum of general reserves, very many of actual rest. We still don't know how to do the calculation yet. We did for practice, which is, isn't a very good, for us it would be six or twelve months running costs, so that's a way out of our budget either. So I believe that we should increase it to higher than one eighty, but how far we go inside this special.
Good that it's gone up to that level, that's lovely, thank you, Sarah.
I suppose I should ask if there are any other questions. Okay, we're on item eleven now, deciding whether to adopt the council's financial regulations and I'm going to bounce that all back to you.
Yeah, the last slide, please. There were three or four minor recommendations in the financial works that have been circulated, but I don't think we need to go through them again.
Suppose there's any questions on this, Sarah?
Are there any questions on the financial regulations?
Yes, Lizzie.
I feel duty bound. I think this is the kind of custom now that each year I kind of just mentioned that I've read the financial regulations and that the amendments make sense. And I feel that this is part of our thing. So no, no question, just a kind of a nod to a new tradition.
I like it. Proposed, proposed Sarah Butler, sorry, seconded by Rich Ackroyd. Next meeting, okay, the next meeting will be at seven o'clock on Wednesday, the fourteenth of July, twenty twenty one. So I think that's us done for tonight. Thank you very much.
Can I just mention, I think, Escape of the Country, the building in Froome this past week? They were down in the top part of the bridges with the key chap.
Was that a virtual thing?
No, that will be broadcast hopefully in six months' time, that's it. Yeah.